Call the Tuesday, December 7, 2021 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. One quick thing that I did want to address, under Chairman's announcements, I wanted to actually apologize to the Vice Chairman. Based off the last meeting, temper's flared a little bit. Some of my commentary was inappropriate and unnecessary. Wanted to offer my apologies for that.
That's accepted. I don't think an apology is necessary at all. Just as guilty if there's any personal. Well, sometimes things get heated. I don't see it as a problem.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently listed on our agenda? Seeing is none. We can move right into the first agenda item, which is the local cultural council appointment of Susan Leonardi. Is Susan here? Susan, come on up.
Good evening.
Hello.
I understand from your application, you're new to town.
Yes, I am. We've been here about six months now.
Well, welcome to Douglas.
Thank you.
Leonardi jumping right in, wanted to help out and volunteer, huh?
Want to be part of the community.
That is a beautiful thing. And you served on previous boards in your last town, huh?
Yes. Oh, not in my last town. I'm currently on the Board of Easter Seals, Rhode Island.
Okay.
I have served on the Board of John Hope Settlement House in Providence, and I was the zoning and planning board clerk for the town of Johnston for nine years.
So you know how these meetings go.
I know how they go.
Well, excellent.
She's being very, very humble. You worked for Mayor Polisina?
I did.
She deserves a medal.
Thank you, sir, for realizing that.
Instant access into heaven. And Joe's a character.
It was an interesting experience.
So you work for LISC now?
I do. Been there for about six years.
When did Carrie Zazzle leave?
Carrie left about maybe three, four years ago. She's the EDP of another nonprofit.
New England.
I can't remember the name, but yeah. Do we still see her at different events, well, when we have events?
Well, welcome to Douglas. Mr. Chairman, everyone who's worked at LISC, I've worked with in the past. My former role in the city of One Sock at LISC was an essential partner in everything we were trying to do to benefit the community. And I know that that is the heart and soul of that organization. So if Susan's associated with it, stands, give her credit.
Excellent.
I'll also echo the welcomes to our town and certainly thank you for wanting to serve it. So with that, I'd make a motion that we approve Susan Leonardi to the Local Cultural Council Committee for a three-year term.
Second.
Excellent. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. And as we have a remote member, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just like that.
Thank you.
They said government could be slow. All right. Next on the agenda is the Douglas Police Department presentation of the Officer Richard J. McLaughlin Community Service Award. We have Chief Migliannico and Sergeant McLaughlin here to do that.
Yes. Joseph? Yes, so obviously Chief Migliannico is with me. I also have my mother, Donna McLaughlin, my sister, Kristen Sabatino, Joseph Bolandrina, and his wife, Gretelene, and his son, Max.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll make this brief. Thank you for squeezing us into the schedule tonight. I'm just going to read right off of what I have here. The McLaughlin family, in cooperation with the Douglas Police Department, Chief Nick Migliannico started this award in 2018 in honor of the late Officer Richard J. McLaughlin, who passed away in 2016. Officer McLaughlin was a lifelong resident of Douglas and served the town both on and off duty and loved being a part of the community. This year's nominee was selected by an eight-member committee that collectively came up with this year's recipient. As a result of COVID-19, last year's process was bypassed. Instead, a monetary donation was made and placed at the Blacksno Valley Vigo Club. In addition to this year's award, we will also be making a donation of $500 to the Boy Scout Troop 134 towards their renovation efforts, the old fishing game club on Church Street. Before acknowledging this year's recipient, we would also like to acknowledge the efforts of several other nominees from our community. Firstly, former Selectman Michael Hughes, who served the Board from 2006 through 2021, five of which years was as chairman. Selectman Hughes was a passionate professional, was passionate professional, and earned the reputation as being a voice of reason. I didn't put that in there today. Lori Huth, who is an outreach worker for Family Continuity in Whitemsville. Lori is a dedicated worker, and her compassion for those she serves goes beyond the hours of any employment schedule. Lastly, but equally is remarkable, Mr. Robert F. Kosky and his late wife, Bernadette Marks Kosky. The Koskys, for many years, brought the magic of Christmas to Depot Street, bringing joy and memories to those both young and old. This year's award is being presented to a longtime resident, Mr. Joseph M. Bolandrina. In the application document, the nominator wrote that character is defined as the mental and moral qualities distinctive to an individual. Joseph has exemplified this in both his personal and professional life. To start, Joseph is a retired U.S. Army sergeant, serving as an armored crew member out of Fort Knox, Kentucky. In his personal life, it was noted that he often does little things from helping neighbors or randomly clearing snow from people's cars at hospitals to regularly donating blood for the Red Cross. Joseph has volunteered with numerous organizations for Massachusetts, the Philippines, locally with the Blacksno Valley New England Mountain Riding Association, and volunteering as a coach with the New England High School Cycling Association. Joseph has volunteered time with charities, including seven years with the Pan-Mass Challenge, the Little Folk Festival, the Chefs for Food Charity, advocating for children through a number of organizations, including cultural, humanitarian, and educational charities throughout the world. In 2019 and 2020, Joseph and his wife Gretelene were featured in separate Oxford Times articles outlining their volunteerism. Although this award is being presented to Joseph, I think should be noted that they both have an extreme amount of volunteerism, and we are lucky to have them both in our community. Thank you very much. Now, I ask my mother and my sister to come up and present you with this year's award.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And the greatness that this award really represents is, I don't know what I can do, but I'm going to do what I can to keep the inspiration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the note is presented to Joseph M. Bolandrina in appreciation and recognition of your continued commitment to the community through volunteerism, selflessness, presented by the McLaughlin family in cooperation with the Douglas Police Department.
A lot of the whole family.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Big smile.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
See you.
Chief, don't forget the memo on him in a suit all the time. All right. All right, next we have the Good Energy Aggregation Presentation by John O'Rourke. How are you?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Town Administrator, thank you for letting me come before you tonight to give you an update on the community electricity aggregation. I have to say, I'm very happy to be here in person. For the last two months, we've been able to get out to see our clients in person, and 201, everybody's very happy about that, rather than zooming, because I know I am zoomed out, you know? So, as I say, I'm very happy to be here. On that first page, I just noticed that our data person gave us some wrong numbers for minimum and maximum. I will get the correct numbers to you. But essentially, the January 2016 launch, you had 2,688 accounts, and in August, which is the last month we have numbers for at this point, we're up to 2,717. So that's remained very stable. You can see by that graph below that the numbers for the Douglas CEA have remained very stable. And that's good, because it basically says that the community has accepted the program, and they're happy with it. We've gotten very few calls from Douglas residents, and I was in to see Matt about a month ago, and I told him any calls that come in to hear or Lisa, to make sure that they're sent on to me, because I don't want the staff burdened with any calls. But essentially, we've gotten very few calls from Douglas residents, which is a good sign. On that next slide, the cumulative savings for Douglas, about $1.2 million, which is good. We're going to see a tremendous increase in that over the next six months because of the national grid rates, which have gone up tremendously. And that could be seen on this next slide, the rate comparison chart. And you can see, this tells the whole story since the launch, that essentially, we've been above the rate for national grid on only three occasions. Every other time, we've been below. So it's been very successful. And this includes, this rate chart not only includes Douglas, but the 25 communities that Douglas is involved with, which is known as the Mass CEA aggregation. And essentially, it's the largest aggregation in Massachusetts, and very recently became the largest aggregation in the country of its kind. So that's very encouraging. So essentially, we consider this a very successful aggregation. And again, that chart tells the story. On that next page, you have a rate comparison between the national grid rates for the November 1 adjustment, which comes in at 14,821. You might be happy that you're not in EverSource, because they're going to come out in January with 15,735. So interesting numbers that they're facing. And essentially, that has a lot to do with the spike in natural gas over the last six months, and generally, the national energy policy at this point in time. We're going to see numbers that are higher than we have in the past. And you can see the comparison with the standard at 10,4. So you literally have over a four cent difference in those rates. And we expect we will see residents from Douglas and our other communities that are still on the basic service of national grid to come into and enroll in the aggregation, which should give us some stronger negotiating terms for the next renewal. We also added a 50% and 100% green for those members of the community who are interested in more renewable energy in their mix. And those people have a choice to go into those programs if they wish. While they're in the aggregation, they switch among these options whenever they want to, if they want.
Excuse me?
Essentially, that...
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I remember when that discussion was being had as to whether we should move forward with that. Are you seeing people opt into it?
We generally get a very small number of people that go into those. There are certain communities in your further east that are very progressive in terms of the renewable energy they want. We find as we come further west, that's not really the case. People are more interested in price than they are in the renewables. But we do get some people that go into the 50 and 100%. And I can get Matt those numbers, anybody who's in those.
All right.
Okay. But generally, it's not a big number. Okay. And essentially, as I say, that tight range for enrollments during the period of the aggregation indicates a good acceptance by the community, and we certainly expect that to continue. And as I say, during this next period, we're going to see an increase in the number for those people once they get their first national grid bill in December. They're going to be very... Your national grid rate in the last summer adjustment was 9,7. So that's gone up 50%. So people are going to get a bill, and they're going to go, oh, my God. So what's going to happen, again, we're going to get a lot of those people who are still on the national grid basic service to come into the aggregation. And certainly, we expect these cumulative savings trends to continue, although we can't guarantee future savings. But you can see by that chart that we're doing very well. And I'll open it for questions.
Oh, that's pretty straightforward. We're saving money.
It is. It is. You know, this program has been very successful, and we're very happy with it, and we certainly hope you're happy with it. And again, any questions you have, you have my card. My cellphone number is on my card. Any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call, okay?
Do you offer consulting services on teaching kids that light switches work both ways?
They don't turn them off that often, yeah.
No, this is a real success story. I remember, you know, entertaining this when we first brought it on with the discerning eye. Curious to see whether you'd live up to what was being said, and you certainly have.
You know, we're going to the MMA trade show and conference again this year, this year, next year, actually, which is 2022. We started there in 2014, and that's when we started talking to Ross Perry, who basically brought this all together when he was the Director of Municipal Services for the SERP Group. And it took us, basically, through all of 2015 to get plans approved. The launch went to 2016, and here we are going on six years already, and it seems like yesterday. But as I say, not only our plans, but our competitive plans, competitors' plans have been very successful. And it's doing a lot to not only save people money, all those savings are not guaranteed, it's doing a lot to add renewable energy to the mix here in Massachusetts, which is important, and everybody knows that the climate and the environment are as important as anything else. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Good seeing you again, and particularly in person. Lisa, good seeing you. And we'll see you soon. And again, any questions you have, please give me a call. Have a good night.
You, too. All right. So that brings us to the ARPA engagement proposal and... I'm sorry, I'm having people speaking tonight. Strategic Municipal Services LLC and possible votes. We have Gene, because it says, I believe it was addressed to you.
Good evening.
Hi, Jean.
How are you? The town is at receipt of ARPA funds and is, our request, or I'll speak for Lisa and myself, to request the additional services of an outside consultant. And ARPA funds are going to be more complex, both in awarding the projects, keeping up with the FEMA, or the federal guidance, and the constant change of rules. I think it'll be beneficial for the town, not only to use them for reporting requirements, but also in guidance with how ARPA funds are to be spent, so they're spent in accordance with the rules. And they work with a number of communities. So they're constantly, you know, attending their webinars and, you know, staying up to speed on the changing environment. This is one company. This was recommended by the Town of Webster. They have used it for the, used this company for the CARES funding as well.
So, and I'm assuming this is just kind of like, as we start planning on using ARPA funds is when we'd actually do the engagement with them?
No, it would be right away, because they're going to be reporting requirements. And this, no, it's not like you spend the money, you submit reimbursement. It's not like a reimbursable grant. They have certain deadlines that you have to meet. And honestly, I don't have the staff.
Gotcha.
You know, you have to keep up to speed with their requirements. These are federal funds, these are millions of dollars. It's not something to take lightly.
Question, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement that you probably should have some help going through this, because I'm sure it's extremely complex. Their fee, is that something the town absorbs, or is that, can that be?
They're understanding...
Out of the ARPA funds?
That it would be coming out of the ARPA funds.
Okay. So it kind of funds itself?
Yep.
Yeah, just to chime in, I think this is a necessary thing. As we've tried to navigate the eligibility guidance that we've been given from the United States Treasury, which is where this, where we were report to, this is FEMA, this is the United States Treasury. They've been vague, they've been reluctant to answer questions. The statute itself has vague language in it. And we're foisted into the position of having to make our own eligibility determinations if we don't have outside help. That puts you in the position of being judge, jury, and executioner, and then somebody else gets an audit if. That's a really bad place to be.
And also the burden of the learning curve.
I think the staff here is, I know they've drawn from the city of Worcester?
Um, yes.
Or the town of Auburn. It's, I think it's Worcester. Folks who are just really familiar with programmatic implementation and the role of the municipal finance directors that work all around us. So I have, you know, you always want to go it alone, because you can save a little bit of money, and you can use it for your own purposes. But in this case, I really don't think it's a good idea. I think we need the outside help.
It sounds like it's money well spent.
Yeah, and like I said, not only just in the reporting requirement, just make sure your projects are meeting the requirements of the ARPA funds, because the last thing you want is for you to award a project and then have it say, uh-uh, didn't meet it.
For instance, a lot of the eligibility criteria and the guidance from USD references other statutes. So for us to, for instance, determine whether a water project would be eligible for ARPA funding, you have to go to the Safe Drinking Water Act. None of us is attorneys, and our town council doesn't have the time to parse through the United States Code to find all this stuff. We need somebody who's going to, first of all, probably develop a template for all of this client community, so we'll be reporting in a uniform way. That always helps. Because on the other side, they get confidence, they see, well, everybody's doing it this way. But also, that touch and go that you need to do when dealing with the federal bureaucracy, the phone calls, the assurances, written guidance, should all be resident in one place so that they're, you know, pushing us in the right direction. Communities that have gone it alone on FEMA and CARES Act have struggled, you know, to make the right choices.
And it'll make your life easier, Gene.
Well, Gene has a lot to do, you know? And it's between CARES and FEMA, and now ARPA. And we still have our own state grants that we know we've been awarded, that we have to meet all of their reporting requirements, as well as the local municipal finances. There's a limit to what we can charge our staff to do.
But again, it's not just the reporting.
Right.
It's making the right decisions using the funds. So they would serve as counsel, you know? And there was some talk in the beginning of when we were going to receive ARPA funds that we would have a committee. I don't know where that's...
My assumption at the time was that the eligibility would be a broad range of projects.
Yeah.
I never expected to be handed this really narrow Safe Drinking Water Act, Clean Water Act, municipal broadband expansion. It's a very narrow set of things that we can actually spend the money on. Nobody thought this through, by the way, because they created so many narrow programs. And when every municipality across the United States of America goes to spend the money, we're all looking for the same supplies. So if you can only do water and sewer projects, one would expect the cost of bike to go up, because everybody's got money to buy. There's only so much capacity, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I think the point here is that we expected to be able to pick from a broad menu of things, public safety applications, you know, anything that had to do with recovery, and it's really not.
No. It did seem too good to be true. So I would have no problems supporting this, Mr. Chairman.
I was sold on it as soon as I heard it was going to make Gene's life easier.
That's very kind. Thank you. But again, I wanted to make sure you understand it's broader than that.
Yeah, understood.
And, you know, you're talking millions of dollars in funds, so you want to do it the right way. This is, again, one company that does this type of work. My concern is, as the ARPA funds come in, that's going to be competitive as to who hires companies. That's why we requested that be put on this board meeting, as opposed to waiting for a future one, because we kind of want to...
Get in there and get it done.
Get in there and secure a company to help us.
Can the first thing they find out and confirm is that ARPA funds can be used for their services?
I did ask that question in the email, and I will follow up on that. Their response was, they believe it can be used under a certain section of ARPA, but I will confirm that.
Yeah.
But I would also say, if it's not, I understand you can't spend without appropriations, I wouldn't recommend that you do that. But if it's not covered, which I doubt it won't be covered, because they usually cover admin costs, then I think it's still beneficial for the town to go forward, even if that's at a future town meeting, a warrant article.
Would you want to make a motion on this one?
Yeah, my only question is, what would the motion say? Because...
What? Want me to take a swag?
Sure.
Because I think we'd want to make a motion to approve entering into an agreement with Strategic Municipal Services. So, under the contingency of we can fund it via ARPA.
Do we want...
Yeah, I don't like that.
I don't like...
Well, I don't think you have a choice, because you don't have a funding source. So I guess...
So you're saying Kevin was right?
Somebody mic this on the calendar.
I just wanted that reflected in the minutes, that's all.
Lisa, could you mic this down?
The only thing I would add to that is, you know, the, it would be spent under the town administrator. So ARPA funds would be signed off by the town administrator. I will confirm that. I have, I don't have an issue with it being continued upon that being a funding source. However, I would like to support if it's not, and again, I doubt that it's not going to be covered, that we would be seeking a warrant article at the next available town meeting.
That makes sense.
Sure.
Second.
They're looking at me. I'm good.
Do you want me to run through the motion again, just so we know? So I'm terrible with remembering the name of the company.
Strategic Municipal Services LLC.
I think it's in the letterhead.
Mike Connor.
Yeah, I know, and I flipped it over too soon.
I need a new binder.
All right. So we have a motion to enter into an agreement with Strategic Municipal Services LLC, contingent upon ARPA funding being eligible in order to fund this. In the event that it is not, having support of making this a warrant article on the next town meeting, as it becomes available.
Second.
Everybody good with that motion?
Yep.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing is none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye. Could I ask, if you can use the microphone, because it fades out people on a talk to the mic.
Oh.
Same as two.
Yeah, everybody's got a lot to say.
That means you can second your own motion.
That's like when he used to go remote, he'd log in three or four times. That way, he always had the majority. All right. That settles that, then. Onto the next agenda item. CMMPO alternate membership for Southeast Subregion and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman.
It's a planning organization.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of highlighting my passion for planning, I just would gladly take this nomination. It's what I do, Dave.
Apparently, yes, yeah.
Just to frame the issue. If the board decides tonight to forward the name of one of its members to the organization for consideration to be the alternate, right? So, reading the letter, it's not that we have a seat and you're just going to pick from the five of you who's going to get the seat. The seat represents the southern Worcester County area. The primary occupant is a selectman from Sutton, and there is no alternate. And it's kind of planning language, right? Everything's an acronym, everything refers to some obscure federal statute. This particular entity allocates Transportation Improvement Program Fund, so-called TIP. The TIP program is a brainchild of the now-deceased former chairman of the Senate Environment Public Works Committee, who may have been from Rhode Island. But it was to give flexible funding source for things that go not just to the paving of streets, but the overall streetscape and making things more attractive, easier to navigate, better signage, yada, yada, yada. This is adjusted on a regular basis. As projects are funded, other projects are moved up the priority list, and the funding can be substantial. So you may only have to sit once in a while, but what happens with select board members is sometimes they don't get reelected, sometimes they don't want to stay on, and the alternate goes on. So it's kind of a...
No, I understand. This is an important one, and it piqued my interest, and I was having fun with that. But if this board wanted to put me forward in the interest of having the town at least considered for election, I would put my name forward.
And your extensive background in planning always helps.
Well, goes without saying.
Anybody want to make a motion to nominate them?
I'll make a motion to nominate them.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Patrick, aye.
Bowen, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.
All right. On to the next, which is the Soldiers Field Film Contract Review and Possible Votes.
He said, "Where exactly are we in this process? Are you asking the board to agree with Rich's comments?"
Yes.
So what we're really asking for here is to go back at the other side with Rich Bowen's comments, not really voting the contract tonight, voting your position on it. I think Rich's comments are... Really do protect the town, so...
Correct. And just by way of background, I forwarded this to the Recreation Commission and the baseball program. No one had any real strong thoughts. Couple of thoughts were included in Attorney Bowen's comments. So it would be my recommendation to take his advice and ask for an amended contract.
One question. I notice in paragraph two, they're talking about it being granted for a period of up to 20 days in October of 2021. That's behind us.
That is true. They...
It should be 20.
Right.
They have a do-orient.
They did come for a few days in '21, but that was already approved. I think that's a typo, it should say 2022.
So they're coming back?
Yes.
From the future? Yes. Do we want to make a motion on Rich's comments?
Make a motion that we accept Rich's comments and forward to the filmmaker's lawyer those comments in the hopes that they will accept them and send us a cleaner contract.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bowen, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Okay.
You can always tell when people don't know anything about baseball, when they would name their company Ephes Film. Because Ephes is a last-ditch desperation.
What's the famous guy that's in this film?
Bill Lee.
Bill Lee, did he throw one?
It was a moon... It was the... What did he call it?
Spaceman Bill Lee?
Spaceman Bill Lee, and it was... I'm forgetting the name of it. He threw an Ephes beating call.
Yeah, you threw an Ephes if you wanted the kid to just hit it so you could get batting practice going.
Well, you just wanted to stun somebody with a pitch that was arcing in from 10 feet high and crossing the plate, strikes.
I'm thinking more Sam Maugh.
Yeah.
You get the kid down the street who's never going to hit it. You've got to let him hit it every now and then, Kevin. All right, let's go.
All right, then. Issues that may need town meeting action and possible votes.
I'm assuming that Mr. Monarek is otherwise occupied this evening because he was to speak to this.
So should we...
We will, in executive session, discuss some matters revolving interests in real property that, because of their timing constraints, will probably have to be dealt with.
Speak of the duck.
Said Bob's name three times. He showed up.
Well, you know what? You can wait. Now that I'm babbling, you're interrupting.
Way to go, Bob.
Nothing in the world like timing, Bob.
But, I mean, he's got more to talk about when it comes to the interest in real property. This is... We will be asking the select board to use its authority to call a special town meeting in advance of May for a limited purpose of resolving some of the legal issues that arise from the discussions around real property. There's a lengthy conversation about the substance that isn't yet appropriate for open session. But this is to put you unnoticed and everyone in the community unnoticed that this is a viable discussion, that we cannot really wait until May to take care of this business because it will put our project partners into the construction season before they get necessary answers. And we can't ask people to invest millions of dollars on a contingency like that, so... How many articles have you... Are you... You're working on, what, five to seven articles? Five?
Five definite, six possible.
There are a couple of water department issues that also have come to the forefront. These are unusual times, where we are unusually busy around these specific projects. It might actually help make the meeting meaningful because all the concepts come together, but they have to be dealt with in separate articles. So that's where we are. I just don't know that you need to vote on anything right now. But at the proper time, we'll have Rich Bowen come, but I believe it is. The select board may call the meeting and was... It happens fairly quickly after you call.
It could be 30 days.
30 days, I think, maximum.
So we'd be looking probably for an agenda item next meeting this month? Good.
All right, you're going to be ready?
You're going to be on time?
This is perfect timing.
Do you need to call ahead of the meeting?
You got it all set. He was ready last week, yeah.
All right. So we're on to Personnel Policies and Procedures Amendment pertaining to military leave and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, experience is the greatest teacher. We have found that the personnel policies of the town are a little bit behind the times when it comes to addressing military service by our active employees, who are either reservists or members of the guard. And for that reason, we went back and forth with Attorney Mazur, and we also sought sample policies from other communities. We are finding, as are many other communities, it is difficult to recruit, especially first responders. Those who have served or who are currently serving on a part-time basis in the military have proven to be a solid group of people to be able to have join. The issue is, they still have commitments, and we have to accommodate the fact that they have weekend drill and they may be called up for long periods of time. So our policy needs to be updated.
I was going to say that...
The suggestion is that we would strike everything from Section 6.2 of the Personnel Policies and Procedures that's under Douglas and replace it with the language that's attached here in the back of your packet. My only... This comes from a... A lot of the language was lifted from a collective bargaining agreement from another community for firefighter union, but we would like it to apply to town employees. So every place where you read firefighter, it should say employee because we have... We may have police officers, we may have day-to-day staff at town hall that have the same demands on them. We want to treat all of our employees the same way. Other than those amendments and some simple converting all the his to their, just so we get everybody covered. But it expands and lends detail to the amounts of time that somebody may take. And then there's the escape hatch. Mr. Chairman, is subsection F, any employee covered by the Uniform Service Employment and Employment Rights Act. So we catch all such things. However, that is amended, we would be in compliance.
Okay. Because especially people in this particular line of work, they could be deployed for a year to 18 months. So they usually exceed the one weekend a month, two weeks over the summer gig. So you would want a motion like what's in Lisa's mail?
So this is a policy, so it needs three readings.
Okay.
So you can concentrate on it for a couple more meetings.
But after the third reading is when we would want to actually strike the language and then replace. Got it? Do you find that this is a barrier to hiring people?
It's more of a retention problem.
Retention?
Because if somebody is called up, let's say it's for a relatively brief time, two weeks. No, make it a little bit longer, say two months. You know, they need assurances that they're going to come back, that the job is still going to be here, and that they haven't made an unnecessary sacrifice for their family's financial well-being. Gets complicated with the guard. Some, you're called up on national duty, if you can draw both your federal and your state pay, you might be doing okay. But if you only draw your state pay, you may come in well below your municipal wage. I think it's the state pay that's lower than federal.
Think the state usually... They're not far off. If you only draw one of the two, you're definitely not going to make the wage that you're making now.
So let's just say, yeah, no matter who it is, if it's only one of the two, it's not close.
No.
So we would make up a differential between the military pay and that.
Because reservists and guardmen, they have their own pay scale anyway. You can actually pull that out, but...
And it's dependent on rank.
Time and branch, and yeah. Unless they're in the Navy, then they get creative. I'm not kidding, they give you different rates of pay based on what side of the equator you're sitting on at that particular point in time, and it's by the day. All right. Are you running away, sir? Can you be trusted with that pencil? I don't know how I feel about you with a sharp object in your hand. All right, so we need to review and approve liquor licenses and possible votes. I wanted to... There is a handful of these that are slightly troubling. We have Mr. Frazier. Keep me honest on this, my good friend. Douglas Package Store, Grill on Main, Beagle Club, and Picket Fence.
I believe you got a list of the problems that I have with these different establishments with regards to fails on their inspections. The ones that I haven't issued the licenses to are either still noncompliant or haven't even reached back to me for reinspection. That's the Grill on Main, Douglas Package Store has not reached back to me at all. Beagle Club has not reached back to me at all. The other ones that we have issued the licenses or the certificates, the SoCal is compliant, they just have their fire alarm system, but they have a scheduled date for inspection. Pointill Fish and Game, it's the same thing with their alarm, but they have a scheduled date for inspection. Picket Fence, we found out today, they had their grill... Their hood cleaned, they sent a copy of their certificate for that, and Gregory's also did the same, but getting their hoods cleaned. We had a lot of miscellaneous problems throughout. The most intense one that I have right now is the one with the Douglas Package Store. They've got some pretty serious issues there with overstocking. That's originally a single-family residence, turned into a package store. They've got areas on the second floor that are so filled with their product, there's not even pathways to get through. So I don't even know what their load specs would be for what they've got on that second floor. I look at the building, I see what appears to be a transferring of weakness in some of the structures from it. So I did say to them, "You're going to have to give me an accounting on a weight distribution on that second floor of that building." They get the same problem in the basement. They get aisleways that you can't even get through, you can't even see the furnace. That's inside the building, along with no smoke alarms, exit lights falling off the ceilings, open junction boxes throughout, flooring material that's lifted off the floor, been that way for a period of time, but doesn't make it right. They also have a garage on the outside that they use for their storage of the cans, the bags, the cans and bottles. That doesn't appear to be overwhelmingly bad until you walk inside and look up and everything on the attic space is coming through the floor. So they did make mention that they were going to be wanting to build a new garage over there for storage and all that. Another one that I don't even know if it's listed here is they redid the floor and the walking cooler. I looked underneath, this is, "Did you pull permits? Did you do any specs? Any... Anything with this to let me know that you got the proper carrying capacities?" "Oh, no, we just did it." "Okay, well, just give me the engineering work on it." So there's quite a bit with that property.
So, Matt, we're not obligated to renew their license?
That's a question I always defer to counsel on. The issuance of a license under various statutes, it's not technically a property right, but you have to show cause to change the status of the license. You can decline to renew, and what the favorite process is that they would have to come in with a timeframe for the necessary compliance. It would hold the license over them as leverage to get them to do what they need to do, be in compliance.
So...
At the actual technical decision, revocation and nonrenewal are not the same thing, so... And it's not... I'm not a practicing attorney, so I don't feel comfortable going much further than pointing out this difference between.
So if we choose to not renew until they become compliant, their license expires on the 31st of December.
It'd be closed.
So they would have to close their doors until they're in compliance? Is that correct?
Or it would be, I think... Again, I know a lot more about this in another state than this one. You could suspend the license, you could issue it conditionally, you could... There's a lot more flexibility. It's not black or white, light switch on the wall, on or off. I think there's things that you can specifically prescribe so that... I think there's things that you can specifically prescribe so that somebody comes into compliance without lifting it from them entirely. Because it's their way of life, right? So you cannot possibly conduct your business without the license.
My only concern is, is a lot of the things that Ken's bringing up are all public safety issues. Like if you have a second floor where you don't know what the load structure is that's sitting on that and it looks like it's compromised, we issue a license, it goes in, that second floor collapses onto the first and we have people in there, that sits on us.
And once you say you know something about it, you have to do something.
Question?
Go ahead.
Is the, is this just a, an inspection for the license purposes or is this also an occupancy inspection?
This is classified, the code is a 304 inspection for concurrent with their liquor license.
Yeah, that means nothing to me. So what I'm asking is, is this a condition of their, to be able to occupy that from, from January 1st to December 31st each year? Is this how that works with that inspection? Because as Kevin pointed out, it's a, there's safety concerns in there. You go in larger retail establishments, they have defined aisle ways in which you go down. I'm reading through the notes here. I think Ken put, and Kent put in his notes that the aisle ways need to be a minimum of 24 inches. I don't even know if that's code, but I seen that somewhere in all those papers that I was looking through.
That's, that code, that, that was Kelly Manning that pulled that code out and that's a fire code for that. There is compliance code-wise for accessibility aisles. Now, does that classify as accessibility aisles? What they've done is they've got bulk storage. So bulk storage falls out to one category. Accessible aisles for people to get through falls under another category. So you, you run into a multitude in a property like this or any of them that are storing. I mean, it's, it's not really classified as a flammable item. It would add to fire if there was a fire there, being alcohol. So I don't know what the...
Fire more.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I don't know what the applicable code for the stock aisles would be in that situation. I would have to go back into the code and figure it out for the classification of the product. And then that comes up with a fire rating classification for the structure.
And so what I was thinking was, when Matt was saying that, as far as renewal or revocation of the license, this, these things that are pointed out in these inspections between the fire department and the building official are more code violations. So even though that you may not be able to withhold their license, you can still enforce a code violation. So either way, it needs to be enforced.
Well, I mean, we can just choose to not renew. As opposed to saying we're revoking it, they can continue to operate until the end of the month.
If you have a building in the situation of the Douglas Package Store that becomes a life-threatening issue, that can be, I don't know about the licensing part of it, but the property itself can be put into condemnation if you find that it's a structural failure that people are going to be going into. Not something you really want to get into. You know, there's a lot that goes with that, but that is, that is a viable thing that has happened in the past when I was up in the city.
Well, I would, I would like to work with the people. I'm not interested in shutting down a company, a business in town. I am concerned about the load bearing thing. Is that a difficult thing to have an engineer assess?
They're going to have to assess what they're going to have for storage on that floor. And they would have to do that and then they would have to get the engineering reports for what the, the load carrying capacity. Typically in a residential property, your second floor and above is 30 pounds per square foot. So it sounds...
That's live load. So they have a constant load on this.
Right. That's live load. Dead load is different. Dead load, I think, is allowed at 20 pounds per square foot. Dead load on the second floor.
You think they're exceeding that?
Oh, yeah, they're exceeding that. I haven't been in there and just by what he said...
Well, I mean, it, it sounds like they could be, or they, they might not be. I mean, you take a water bed that, you know, it's got 80 gallons of water in it and you could set it on Dixie cups. So what do you get for a square foot for the dead load standing there? So there's, the engineer would have to go in, figure out what they have for product up there, get a baseball idea on their weight and then go to the structural part of it, do an analysis.
Any idea how old that house is?
I, I don't know. I'm going to say that was probably in the 40s, 30s or 40s that was.
So I'd be surprised if they have 30 pounds because it's probably rough cut two-by-sixes.
There, what I saw in the basement was two-by-six, two-by-eight, rough construction, you know, traditional two-bys.
Yep. Did any of these issues come up on last year's inspection?
That I don't know.
I was just curious because in the fire report, I don't know if anybody else has seen it, the garage, he's talking about the roof beams and everything are rotted to the point where they're, they're going to fall.
So it's just, when you go into the overhead door they have there, they have an attic space that's got a frame floor above. The boards on the frame floor are rotted through in the front where you can see the facial work is all gone and everything. They got storage of miscellaneous items up there. I did notice a couch and a chair coming through the top.
Do they use that garage now?
That's where they put all of their empty cans and bottles.
They had concerns last year during renewal. At least on the fireside, because I remember Chief Vincent bringing it up, that they had some legitimate concerns, at least on fire prevention and storage and accessibility.
Our efforts in this, I remind business owners of this fact, is that we have for some time labored under the insufficiency of staffing in this department. When we had a part-time building official who was barely able to do the inspections on new construction, working reduced hours during the week. We only really started to catch up with routine business inspections in connection with the licensing process about two years ago, when we went to a full-time building official. And that's why we run into issues that really are occupancy, safety issues, that would have been caught many years ago. It's always been contemplated that a licensing inspection would be fairly routine.
Yep.
And that you would catch minor issues. All that, you can't put eight extension cords together to power that light over there. That's silly. Don't do that. And not structural matters, right? But when you let things go for this long, you may have saved money on the salary down there, but you didn't, you really kind of put everybody in a bad spot. Because now you have five, six, seven years' worth of neglect or, or, you know, gradually pushing the envelope more and more.
That was 20, 30, 40, 50 years of...
Yeah. And that's, you know, everybody wants to accommodate a going concern because it's a valuable pillar of the community. And at the same time, can't neglect your public safety commitments to people.
Yep.
And that's why the, when you assess the health of any municipal organization, it's a learning for everybody, right? You always look to see the tax collection rate. In the building department, you always look to see that routine inspections that are supposed to be annual are done. Because all of these things, when they metastasize over time, cause really big problems. So, I mean, we're trying to catch up to it without really coming down really hard and suddenly on people. So I think what we've done over the last couple of years is just phasing that in. But now we're fully phased in. Now you've got to be compliant.
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing saying it, and I'm not going to speak for the whole board. I can just say, my thoughts on it is, is that I would not be in support of renewing their license. There's just too many safety issues that sit there to make me feel comfortable with allowing people to go in and traverse the store. And there's nothing saying that once they've had a structural engineer come in, repair all the things that are on this checklist, that meet to our building officials' satisfaction, come in and reapply.
I think the most concerning that I find is, is the ones that have not responded. I tried to get out there earlier this year so that they had time to work on failures or, you know, imperfections, whatever you want to call them. So we did these inspections mid-November was the last of the inspections. And these, these companies have not even responded. I haven't gotten a telephone call, an email, a text, anything from them.
Which ones were they?
So far, it's the Beagle Club, the Grill on Main, and the Douglas Package Store. None of them have responded.
I guess my thought on it is, is the ones that are all set, we just move forward and approve unless anybody has any thoughts on it. The ones that...
If you're going by the all set on Ken's list?
Yeah.
He noted that the SoCal Club and the White and Silver Fishing Game still had their fire department inspections, so just acknowledge that, that's all.
All right.
They're not, they're all set as far as Ken's concerned, but not all set from the fire department.
Having conversation with fire department, they're all set on both sides. They're scheduled for their alarm inspections and we feel comfortable with that being done. The SoCal Club hadn't had an alarm inspection since it was installed in '95. The White and Silver Fishing Game Club, when I told them they needed it, we've never had that. So it's, you're tied into the, to the on-call system, you got to have an inspection yearly along with everything else. So they're both working on it, that's why we're all set with them. That's all they have left on their list of items was the alarm systems.
Who does the inspections?
They, it's up to them to hire whoever they use.
An outside firm? And the reason why I ask that is if the fire department was doing the inspection, I was going to say, how do they know if they're all set if they didn't do the inspections?
Yeah, well, this is...
So if they're all, they've done their visitation, so they're comfortable with what they've seen.
Yeah, this is their alarm system within their structures that they're responsible to get yearly inspections on.
I just want to understand.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt, Kevin.
It's okay.
I'm comfortable with what, with that.
So we, we do have Family Convenience and that Dunkin' Donuts and the Easy Mart downtown scheduled for inspections because they are due on their licensing also. So we have them scheduled for tomorrow morning.
All right. Yes, we have a good chunk that you do have scheduled. So, but you haven't had anything from, seeing Breezy Picnic Rounds, Douglas House of Pizza, Harry's, Little Coffee Bean.
That'll be on the next agenda.
Oh, that's Common Vic.
That'll be on the next agenda.
Sorry about that.
Yep.
I wasn't paying attention. My bad.
We're trying to get the, the alcohol liquor license area taken care of.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we approve that, on the Picket Fence on your memo, there's an outstanding excise bill that has to be satisfied. Anybody else have thoughts on how to move forward on it?
Running out of days in 2021. It is a concern that some entities haven't responded to you. I try to grab my head around that.
What I can do is I will have Jackie reach out again tomorrow with a phone call and follow-up email to the, to the ones that have not responded to give them another opportunity to step forward and let me know what their plans are.
Would it be appropriate to hold this until the next meeting and then just approve everybody that's ready? Or you want to do the partial, let's not, because they're good until the end of the year is why I'm asking.
Yeah, we have one other meeting.
On the 21st.
I mean, I, I would defer to the will of the rest of the board. I have no issues moving forward and approving the ones that are actually all set. Which would be Gregory's, the SoCal, and White and Silver Fishing Game. And then the Picket Fence, it would be, we'd approve it with the contingency that they take care of that excise bill by the end of this month.
What is that, a car thing?
Yes.
A car bill?
Yes.
So someone's...
Under the business's name.
It is under the business's name. All right.
It's a requirement, correct? For it to have all taxes paid?
For the business. Right, as an individual.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it. I would hold off in the interest of cleanliness if, if we reach out to those trouble spots and let them know that there's danger in the horizon if we don't start taking care of some of this stuff.
Works for me. Any thoughts?
Well, we'll go along with the will of the board.
All right. So we'll push liquor licenses to the next meeting and do those in conjunction with Common Vic.
Common Vic, entertainment, Class II, they'll be alive.
It'll be fun. We'll have a blast.
Let's just make sure we have counsel scheduled to be present as these things come
Can you give a partial license that expires in, in the quarter one?
You'd have to take that up with ABCC, I think.
Well, you can do a table's contingent on things.
I don't think that we can issue a partial license.
No, I'm thinking, for instance, the Douglas Village Package, if they understand that our concerns are very real and Rome wasn't built in a day, but they're making strategic and purposeful progress towards meeting our concerns, I would be open to extending their license a quarter or five months, six months, until we see additional...
Yeah, I would have to definitely contact ABCC. They don't even require me to send these reports to them, inspections.
They don't?
They don't require them at all.
Right. So that's another piece to it, too. And that might be why we're not getting the attention that we want, or that we think we should get.
Well, I mean, from the building aspect, if the buildings themselves are not safe, it can be an issue with their occupancy of the building.
I can notify them.
Which goes back to my question as...
Get their input on it, let them know what's going on, guidance maybe from them.
That couldn't hurt.
Yeah, I think, in my eye, a thoughtful look at that location is important before I really proceed.
And I agree with you. I'm all in favor in trying to work with their, with the business, but I would like to see a clear plan that with the building department as well as fire department as to how they're going to address all those issues. Instead of just giving them a timeline, actually have some sort of plan of action to address From what they're describing, it doesn't even seem safe to walk through the building if there was ever a, a need to exit quickly.
All right. Well, we will address the licenses at the next meeting.
So just to be clear, I just want to make sure we're not approving any of them, even the ones that are good to go?
No, we'll just do it all in one clean, neat little soup.
Thank you.
I don't think it'll be clean or neat.
It'll be fun. We'll have a blast.
So, Mr. Chairman, so for clarity, who's going to reach out to these businesses? Would it be Ken or would it be Lisa or Ken or both?
I would probably expect Ken and Lisa, probably primarily where the inspections are sitting on you.
Yeah. I'll, like I said, I'll have...
Just to be fair to the businesses to give them proper notice.
Well, I'll give them another notification. I'll have Jackie send out emails, make phone calls tomorrow to all of the businesses that are on the list still here. You know, the three that haven't responded and see what I get for a response. Like I said, that was the intention this year, was to do it early enough so that there wasn't an excuse at the end of it to come running up at the 28th of the month and say, you know, I'm not ready, but... So these, these have not responded at all.
All right.
And just to be fair, all these inspections were done with somebody of authority at each one of these establishments. So it wasn't just, we showed up randomly or anything. They were planned.
And Joe the cashier was like, I think this is where you'd like...
Yeah. What are you doing here today? You said next week.
Okay. Well, we're on to approving minutes and possible votes. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. You have that on there for the additional, as a certificate holder. On our insurance certificates, we're not listed as a certificate holder, so you wanna get notified if there was a cancellation.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion to approve the November 16, 2021 regular session minutes as well as the November 16, 2021 executive session minutes and retain the executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Patrick, aye.
Bone and aye?
Morris, aye.
Cortez, aye.
I'm going to abstain because I didn't have very good audio.
Okay. It was just on the minutes.
The minutes, okay.
He's absent anyway.
Aye. We're on the liquor.
He can watch it on the video. All right. Well, with all of that done, your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, from time to time, I submit a written report to the Board of Selectmen in between meetings, two, two weeks. A lot can happen in two weeks. And so what I'd like the minute taker to do from now on is to include those reports in the minutes of the select board by reference. So Stephanie has a copy of this. It's just a report. There's no conversation or discussion that occurs, but on the events of the town in between meetings. And a lot of times sets the stage for the live report that we give at each meeting. There's a lot of COVID around. Anybody who's paying attention over the past three or four weeks will have noticed that the case counts in New England are substantially higher than they were over the summer, and frankly, here in Douglas, they are the highest they've ever been. And this is sitting on top of Massachusetts' otherwise fairly high level of vaccination. And the difference between now and the initial waves of the pandemic, if you want to call it that, those first few several months of the pandemic, is that there are no declared emergencies in place at the federal, state, or local level. So we are now responding to this heightened caseload on the default statutes and the background statutes that authorize ongoing day-to-day operations, and there are no extraordinary measures of authority given to anyone. So this incident is being managed now by the local Board of Health and our public health nurse, Agnieszka Putzak, who at this point, we are getting so many mixed messages and unclear directives from the state. This has been part of the response all along, and a complaint that we've had here at the local level is that they say one thing and then they, they do something else in another area, and the two things don't make any, they don't mesh at all. So just as a, for instance, there is a policy in place for state government employees that if they are not vaccinated, they will be terminated. And you've seen significant number of terminations of both public sector staff and private sector staff in the hospitals in Western. They're doing those, what I would consider to be draconian measures, and then they've turned around and told us, well, we're not gonna send you a database list anymore for protection of your first responders, because they need to treat every call like a COVID case. Who in the world comes up with such an idiotic idea? Where we have a known COVID case and our first responders go there and they transport that person in the ambulance, the ambulance is out of commission until it's fully disinfected under CDC guidelines. If we treat every case as a COVID case, our ambulance will never get out of the...
Wash bed.
It will be disinfecting the bloody thing every, every time we go on a call. So there's just a whole bunch of harebrained bureaucratic nonsense, and we're doing the best we can to muddle through it. First and foremost, we do need to find a way to support Agnieszka. Doing contact tracing on 40 new cases a week is a lot to ask a part-time public health nurse to do. So we've made a request this evening of the fire department. We have per diem and call staff with medical credentials who might be able to provide a few hours here and there, once they're trained on the contact tracing protocol. People who are interacting with a contact tracer from the local level typically have medical questions, so we can't just take any volunteer who has no background in the matter and put them behind a phone and give them this responsibility. You need to have some familiarity with what's going on with the pandemic to be able to be a useful responder. As for other activities, I'm very reluctant to do anything without the select board's specific direction to do so in terms of asking people masks or closing down meetings or anything like that. We know that the Open Meetings Act provisions have been suspended to allow remote participation. So at this point, all of the same protocols that were in place are still available to people. They can attend a meeting remotely if they feel safer to do so, they can pay their taxes remotely, they can get a building permit on the e-permitting platform. There's a lot of ways you can interact with them all without actually physically needing to come here. And there's also ways to make appointments and to do other things to accommodate your personal need to feel safe. And that's the, we try to spread the welcome mat as broadly as we can to as many people want to interact with us in different ways. There are still gonna be folks who really do want to come in, pay their taxes in person, ask questions in person, because they may have follow-up questions and they want to see the body language of the person. Right now, there's no reason not to do that, in my humble opinion. As far as our staff is concerned, we have ample supply of tests. So if anybody has, is symptomatic for any reason, we have a standing order in place. They can take a test that was properly purchased with CARES Act funds, stay home for the day, send it into the testing agency, and they will have a result the next day, and it'll help us determine what the footing will be with that, with that person. So right now, we're not asking for any change to policy. We're just making everybody aware that this is kind of a unique situation, because if we had had this caseload back in early 2020, we would have been quite upset about it. Now, it's become so routine for us that it's kind of like we're taking it at stride. As far as the facilities go, the monitoring wells, there are three that were dug here inside the building to trace our fuel spill. The pattern that we've had with this is that sometimes you can smell petroleum, but it's not actually detectable in the water that's drawn. So the wells are brand, brand new. We're gonna wait for them to sit for a while before we can really rely on a test. Next week, the boring company will be on vacation or on another job site. The following week, the week right before Christmas Day, will be here to dig wells outside the building with a suspected flow of groundwater. So we really are, knock on wood, hoping that we don't have any issues with that. The other thing I mentioned in this report is that we had a fuel spill, a heating oil spill at the elementary school. The delivery agency brought the fuel to the wrong tank. Tank was full, didn't need oil, and it blew out the vent in the elementary school. The soil's been remediated, it's being stored on-site until a disposal site is identified. We don't have a bill yet. These things are expensive. The disposal piece is probably one of the most expensive pieces of it. So until we get a bill for that, we don't know. I've asked Attorney Bowen to seriously consider either suing the fuel company or at least threatening to do so and get them to pay for all these expenses. There is absolutely no reason on God's green earth why we should pay for this. This was their error, and to spill 30 gallons of oil on, on the soil, it had to go for a little while before somebody noticed it. So we've got negligence across the board. It is not the town, it should not be the town's problem. We continue to struggle with procurement. Everybody's busy because somehow, for some reason, everybody's decided to improve their home, add to their home, build a new home, improve their facilities, all at pretty much the same time, probably as a result of all the money being injected into the economy. What that means is we go out to bid with a small job, we're having a hard time getting respondents. So we are struggling to make minimum procurement thresholds for the library ceiling project and the gym windows project. We're gonna do the best we can, continuously advertise, and at some point, we're just gonna have to get the work done. I don't want to sound like I'm overly cavalier. Compliance with these things is really important to all of us, but you can't get blood from a stone. If you advertise for eight months, nine months, 10 months, and then you only have three quotes back, or less than three quotes back, but you really need the work to be done, then you really need the work to be done. This passed today, so I'm switching topics. Just today, the town of Douglas, its police department, its fire department, and its municipal center all received a notice in the mail. Today, December 7th, we received a notice in the mail that National Grid would be interrupting our power on December 1st. So a lot of good they did with their notice program. Why was it a problem for us? Because at the same time, we were having our generator serviced, and the service tech removed the necessary part and didn't tell us. If we knew that we were gonna lose power from the street, the routine would be that we would make sure the generator's fully operational and ready to kick on, we actually would, would do the transition before we lost power, just to be self-conscious. This time, what happened, because we had no notice from anybody, the guy absconded with our water pump, so he can't run the generator without a water pump. Oh, it'll run for a few minutes, but then you don't have a problem. We lost power here, we had no power from the street, the generator was disconnected, there was no generator power, the entire building kicked over to its battery backup system, which meant that our servers, all of our computers gracefully shut themselves down without any data loss. And then when power was restored, they were able to reboot themselves gracefully. It's a huge problem, however, with our E911 position, because once you have been on battery backup power for an hour, you are in violation of your Public Utilities Commission authority to use E911. And for a little while, we had a call fire captain who seems to always rescue us, Adam Ferno, was dispatching calls on his portable radio, and then 911 at the state level kicked our calls over to Uxbridge. At that point, though, there were no further calls, and power was restored to the building. Just so you know, we fired the generator service company immediately. They had one last scheduled job in town, they had already bought the parts, and Monday morning, they completed that work. They will no longer work for the town of Douglas. They are disqualified from all future procurements for work that they would have otherwise been qualified to do, on the basis of the fact that they are not a responsible bidder. They have demonstrated that they do not perform against industry standards for a backup standby generator company. So well-powered is disqualified going forward. As for grid, we've been interacting with our local liaison. Our relationship with grid has gotten substantially better, and as we've been cooperating on tree removal and cooperating on other issues, including street light replacement and, and maintenance, we don't want to sour the relationship too much. But it has been brought to their attention that their attempt to notify the town was an epic fail, and it was. Not only did they not notify the town, they didn't notify the 665 residents that they shut off that night. And frankly, this repair was driven by an equipment failure on Main Street at Pole 12 that they should have notified us about at the time they discovered it, because it could have caused service interruption at any time. And since our E11911 position's behind that, we needed to know that then. Then we didn't get notice of the repair until after the interruption. So it's not a good thing. We're gonna work with them on their protocol and get this to be better. Another topic, quite a few tonight.
Before you move on from that one, my understanding, and I just want to make it clear, that as far as well-powered went, our generator for this building was offline, and they never told us, correct?
Correct.
And we found that out the hard way when the power went out.
Correct.
Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
And then they dragged their feet on the repair. So eventually what happened is John and Adam Ferno went to the supplier, purchased the part.
And did it.
Worked with a mechanic, there were some items that we needed to press, but it was, it was fixed within hours, once we had the part.
Thank you.
By our own staff. This evening at 6 o'clock, a public webinar that, my understanding, is over 70 people, mostly Douglas residents, participated in this, it was a Microsoft Teams meeting with the Department of Conservation. And the proposal is to make significant quote-unquote improvements to the southern New England Trump Line Trail from the state line all the way to the Depot Street trailhead. Those improvements include, you know, parking lot improvements, wayfinding improvements, or better signage in certain places, places to sit along the way. And most significantly, they're gonna pave the whole thing from the state line to Depot Street with 10-foot-wide pavement and leave a five-foot-wide, you know, compressed soil pathway for horses. I don't ride horses, but it seems to me that riding a horse on a five-foot-wide pathway is darn near impossible. Maybe a little donkey on the edge of the Grand Canyon can make it, but not a horse. There was a lot of opposition on the call. I would really like members of the board to view the one-hour meeting, to turn on the chat, it was recorded, and look at the comments from residents as they start to come in, because your ability to comment on this proposal will close. The online portal will close December 21st. Your written comments have to be in before December 28th. You won't, your comments won't be taken into consideration after that. Generally speaking, the rule is town administrators and managers are not supposed to have opinions about anything. They're just supposed to do the work that you ask us to do. I used the trail a lot. I couldn't help myself. I weighed in on the chat, specifically with paving. This is a profoundly bad idea. This is an awful project. I noted the presence of a project manager from VHB, and I scratched my head, and I thought, this makes them, they're still batting a thousand. I have never, ever worked with VHB and been happy with their recommendations. Not only do they make horrible proposals, but then they try, they tell you that they're being open-minded, oh, this is just to get your feedback, and then they take this incredibly defensive position. But pavement is good. Pavement doesn't require much money to maintain. Pavement's cheaper to install. Pavement, pavement, pavement. I don't know, you've been out on the trail, but it crosses a number of wetlands areas. It connects Wallem Lake State Park to a wider network of trails in the Douglas State Forest. And the beauty of it is that it's natural, that you are walking on the ground. And if you start paving it, one person, one commenter said it perfectly, this would be a great project in an urban area, because you're like the Blackstone Valley Bike Trail as it goes through Wind Socket and Lincoln and all the way down to Route 116 and Front Street in Lonsdale. That's a great place to take your kids to ride a bike, and you got a street bike, and you're on a pretty wide path, and there are places to stop, yada, yada, yada. But that's not what this trail is about. This trail is heavily used by people with horses, which is a major part of local culture here with our residents, mountain bikers and people on foot, walking their dogs. And you're really basically saying you're gonna totally change the use of the trail from one type of trail to a completely different class of trail. And as many commenters said, who even told you that we wanted this? Like, who's complaining?
Yeah. I don't even know if we need to listen to the proposal. I would like to see this board draft a letter.
Could be motorbikes using the pavement.
So, yeah, there'd be another piece to it.
That's an issue already.
One of the things that... One of the things that I despise about VHB is they make these assertions all the time, because they know you can't prove a negative. They said, they actually said this, and wanted to be taken seriously, saying, and they always say in a condescending tone of voice, which really kinda adds insult to injury. We have found that when we pave these trails, motorized bike traffic actually decreases. So, I would like, I would like to just send a bunch of thirteen-year-olds on their ATVs to, you know...
I know one.
VHB corporate headquarters, and they can ride around on their unpaved surfaces, as opposed to really getting speed up on a paved surface. It's the dumbest comment I've heard in a long time.
Here's my question on that, Matt, is, I mean, our board gets together, we draft a letter, we send it in, people throw all this opposition, saying, I'm not in favor of this. DCR decides that that's the plan that they wanna take. There's nothing we can really do.
Yeah, I don't jump to that conclusion.
I don't, I don't either.
I put more faith in the process. I have enough experience in politics to tell you that if you are a state rep or a state senator, and you represent a town that is outraged that something that they value has been changed permanently by a state agency, you're probably not gonna be real happy. So, you fight like heck to make sure that the people listen to you, because it's incumbent upon you to represent the people you represent in the state office. They were, both Senator Fatman's office and Rep McKenna was on personally, Senator Fatman had a staffer on, but they were very much paying attention to what was being said.
Yeah. I don't know, objection in the strongest possible terms, and then also CCR elected officials with it, and see where it goes. I think DCR, you know, made wonderful stewards of their land, right? And...
Our land.
Our land. This just makes zero sense to me.
Well, the ironic part of it is, there's a very large equestrian community, and one large club that's in this area that donates time over decades to make these trails of what they are now, today. And to suggest that they give them a five-foot-wide path, pathway, they're gonna ride single, ride their horses single file, it kinda defeats the whole purpose of them going out and enjoying each other's company and going through the woods. I've personally owned horses, close to forty years now. My wife donates a tremendous amount of time to the Baystate Trail Riders Association to maintain these trails on a regular basis. And riding on asphalt isn't really where you wanna be riding the horses. Even walking as a person, you wanna be on a natural surface versus working on pavement. It just doesn't make sense.
Perhaps if DCR has all these, I'd call them extraneous funds to pave trails, they could use them to pay us a higher rate on the land they've taken from us. Money would be a little bit better spent, I think.
And, not for nothing, but, you know, I think if you wanna be sensitive to the community that sometimes asks for more greater accessibility, what about the state park itself at Wallam Lake? If you go out there, a lot of the prettiest spots there, if you're in a wheelchair, you're not gonna get to it, because you'd have to go across rough ground. So, take your eight million bucks, don't spend it all in one place, for God's sake, but look at the accessibility issues, access to lavatories, access to drinking water fountains, and access to picnic tables and picnic areas for the community, just so that when people are gathering, you can include people. That would be the first step that you could take to make greater accessibility and to prioritize accessibility, as opposed to taking what is basically, it's not a wild trail, it's not. It's a railway bed, right? It was leveled, it crossed wetland. But, it's a natural trail, why would you take that and basically turn it into an urban streetscape?
It's actually very well-maintained as it is.
It's beautiful. I mean, I failed to see how...
Did Hal have a comment?
Approves that.
Hal, did you wanna say something?
Maybe we should take as a void a position.
I say no paving.
I second that.
So, how do you wanna proceed, though? Here's the thing, so, we can draft a letter and circulate it. The tough thing is then is the Open Meetings Act, right? So, are you deliberating?
Do we give Matt creative license with writing an opposition?
It's pretty clear, a hundred percent against.
I think he, Matt, has the same feelings.
I'm going to instruct the town administrator to prepare a letter to DCR that is opposed to the paving project.
Second.
Could I amend that, Hal, to just reiterate in the strongest possible terms?
You read my mind.
Sure.
Second.
So, the strongest possible terms letter of opposition.
You know, I have quite a vocabulary. You wanna limit that at all?
No, 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 feel free.
You have creative license.
How do you feel about the wayfinding concept improvements to the parking lots?
Those are fine, like wayfinding and parking lots are fine. I think the opposition that we're taking is to the paving.
You just wanna... There might be better uses for it, such as do it that way, I guess.
Well, not all of their, not all of their improvements that they're proposing we're against, it's just the paving portion. The rest of it's fine. Like, if they wanna put waypoints in parking, that's great.
There's a reaction to everything that happens. They're talking about putting seating or whatnot throughout this pathway. How's that affect our safety, public safety departments, fire, police?
Gives them a place to sit.
Who's gonna patrol these things?
Wayfinding might be very useful for public safety. What's the last marker you saw on the trail before you got lost? And it got darkened.
At least narrows down your search and rescue to a grid.
Yeah, for lost people, I'm talking about medical services or whatever. Hey, build it, and they will come.
You know, you can't really say you know the answer to that. So, right now, we can, we have UTVs, and that would be how we would move people around, to get them to a point where we could transfer them to a better... So, will that improve with a paved surface? Yeah, it would, you could drive faster. However, is the nature of injuries going to change, and the frequency of injury gonna change?
That's my point, is the frequency and the staff level that we're gonna need to address these concerns. And not, whether or not we can get there, we can get there, and that's easy enough.
So, is that regarding, take the paving out of it? Like, do we have additional concerns on waypoints and benches? And additional parking?
No, no. It's just a question that came up in my mind, is it affected?
Yeah.
Is it creating more burden on our services, just as the state park did with, when that got out of control? And then, there was an agreement amongst this board to increase the reimbursement to the town.
We have a lot of schools with people riding by, fast on bikes or whatever, or motorbikes.
It won't be safe to ride a horse anymore.
And potentially more accidents.
No. What we're gonna do is push that, that part of the community off that trail, is what's gonna happen.
I mean, we currently have a motion of...
Empowering Matt to write a letter of opposition. Drafted up his creative letter.
Is there any more discussion on that part? You have full creative license, Mr. Wojcicki.
So, my last, I'll make it my last, I could keep going all night, but I'll make it my last. Actually, no, I got a couple.
Should we vote on, finish voting on this?
Finish voting on that?
Yes.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bona, aye.
Morris, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
It's all you again.
At nine o'clock in the morning this Thursday, December 9th, Lieutenant Governor Pleda will be here to announce our $3 million Mass Works grant. Department heads are invited. I know Hal's out of town, the four members have said they're coming. Speaking program is very narrow and tight because of her schedule. So, we'll have a brief introduction of Lieutenant Governor. Senator and rep get about a minute each. The project proponents will get a total of eight minutes to go over some drawings, because that's what this is all about, and that'll be it. It's my intention, I don't think there's any objection from the board, to sign the contract with the state to accept the grant. And, you've authorized me a couple of different times to do different things, I'm just gonna go ahead and sign that document. Typically, that's what happens when we get grants, assign the contracts. Sutton and Uxbridge have also been invited, because this is a regional proposal. As we go along, we learn more and more about how complicated it is to put together a financial stack that includes both state funding sources and federal funding sources. Federal funding sources come with federal constraints, in terms of procurement limitations, procurement rules, and that you cannot let out a single dollar on the project, regardless of the source funding of your match, until you have a signed contract with federal funds. So, to the extent we wanna leverage federal funds to complete the project, we have to get through the federal process, which is some of what dictates the need for a special Lastly, just two quick notes. It's December 7th, which is Pearl Harbor Day. It's, to this day, the United States flag sits at half-staff, and membrance of, remembrance of, my math is, my memory serves me, 3,700 people who died at Pearl Harbor in an unprovoked surprise attack on the United States, crippled our fleet for quite a few months, and launched us into the Second World War. And a lot of the people who fought that day to protect, you know, they reacted to surprise, they were also reacting with inferior equipment against an opponent that had vastly superior military abilities at that point. And in the same vein, anybody who worked for as long as I did in the United States Senate has to at least acknowledge the passing of Robert Dole, United States Senator from Kansas, who was both minority leader and majority leader. It was a very different day when Bob Dole was Majority Leader in the Senate. People actually talked to each other with a civil tone of voice, and they found a way to compromise on major pieces of legislation. Bob Dole was crippled to life in the result of his military service, and was a champion. Without his support, there would not be an American Disabilities Act, because he was a leading proponent of it. He was a class act across the board, he always treated my boss with dignity and respect, they got along really well. And, his passing is a sad time. He was 98, lived the fullness of life, and just sat at St. Bell, it kinda makes me feel older, watching these guys go. But, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. We do have one item under, that I know of anyway, under open session topics, not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting, and that is a request from the town clerk regarding re-presincting 2020. It is in our packet that they're changing Douglas legal boundary descriptions of precincts 1, 2, 1, 2, and 3, and all that's in our packet.
I did look into that a little bit. The town is staying whole in respect to state rep and state senate districts. Interestingly enough, the Webster precincts have broken up into two congressional districts. So, we get our little piece of Jeremandere, close to home, but not exactly here. So, I don't know if we need to approve that, but there's really no reason not to.
We have to approve it.
Oh, we have to? All right, so, to make Bill Galvin...
Galvin.
Galvin happy, I will make a motion that we approve his precinct plan.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bona, aye.
Morris, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Are there any other open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this evening's meeting?
Were we gonna talk trash? Trash removal?
Yes. So, I was contacted by Amy Schilling, a resident of town who's concerned with the amount of trash on mainly Route 16, the bottom part of Gilboa Street. Couple of years back, she did attempt to go out and pick it up. She said it's just getting, like, way out of hand, she can't keep up with it anymore. So, she was looking for other outlets to maybe have volunteers come into town. I don't know if the jails do it anymore, just another avenue of maybe...
They do.
Getting the trash situation under control a little bit.
Yeah, I think I had replied in the Worcester County Sheriff's Department would be who we'd wanna reach out to for that.
Right.
Do they still do that?
To my knowledge, yes. They do the highways, and I think they do other roads on request.
I believe they're always looking for projects for the House of Corrections.
I just think it'd be too dangerous on those stretches of road for Boy Scout troops or even high schoolers to be out on the side of the road doing that. 16's pretty busy.
Depends on where on...
Both ends.
I was gonna say, it would make a good Eagle Scout project, but it is a little risky. I would say start with the Sheriff's Department and see what we can go with that. Anybody else have ideas?
Well, it's kind of a tough time of year to organize a townwide volunteer effort, but Earth Day's not that far away. We can maybe see what Gerald does, and if the jail isn't really coming through, maybe lead through action and get out there and clean it ourselves.
Is there anything else?
I'll touch base with her and let her know the ideas, I'm gonna go to somebody at the Sheriff's Department, and we'll go from there.
Perfect.
One other thing, it's probably not a popular subject, but we should, in the very near future, put it on our agenda to look at the Oktoberfest, where we're gonna have these larger projects coming through town, as well as the truck traffic that we experienced as past event. You have a lot of large 18-wheeler trucks going over a 12,000-ton, 12-ton bridge on Mechanic Street, which creates quite the problem.
Okay.
So, it's something we may wanna start looking at, to give them, if there is a change in venue or something, to give them ample notice to plan accordingly.
Yeah, we'd wanna, if that's a future agenda item, we'd probably wanna have the police fire in highway suit, they're involved in that meeting, too.
Yeah, I'd just rather do it sooner than later to afford them the proper time.
Anything else? Nope? All right, then. So, we would be looking for one of...
All right.
Bona's famous motions.
So, we're going to make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining, interest in real property, investigation and litigation, than to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
I'll second that. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bona, aye.
Morris, aye.
Cortez, aye.
David, aye.
All right. And one of us will call you from executive session, Hal.